Dear God, thank you for bringing us together safely this evening and for the many blessings we enjoy. Help us to remember the reason for the season and open our hearts to kindness, understanding, tolerance, and respect. We ask that you give comfort to those who have lost loved ones and give them peace in the memories of seasons past. We pray for the speedy recovery of those in ill health and let us open our hearts to those alone. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Markovich, here. Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vines.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from November 27th, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of the meeting from November 22nd, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims November 22nd, 2017 through December 13th, 2017 for a meeting of December 18th, 2017. Beginning with claims dated 11/29/17 and ending with claims dated 12/13/17, claim number 7078 through claim number 7562 for $5,826,126.47. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to accept the claims from November 22nd through December 13th, 2017. Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Couple additions. Claim number 7563, Mike Albert Leasing, Inc., $38,389.98. That's for leasing of the fleet equipment from this study with Leopardo for new equipment for various departments in the city. Claim number 7564, Hast, $500 donation from Councilwoman Vines from promotional account for the SLICE program. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to amend in claim number 7563 in the amount of $38,389.93. Is that correct?
Thirty-eight, three eighty-nine, ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay. And claim number 7564 in the amount of $500 to Hast for the SLICE program. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for claims as written. Clerk Golick?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications. Any communications? Any communications?
I just wanted, Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for his assistance with the annual Thanksgiving dinner that was held for the residents of the Montzine Pleasantview Plaza. It was a huge success. I've been doing it for about seventeen years and the residents really appreciated it and I appreciated his help in assisting me with that this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Finance is bringing out 1734, 1735, and 1736.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Building and zoning will bring out 1737.
Thank you, gentlemen. And at this time, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, December 19th, the East Hammond-Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at 6:30 PM. And on Thursday, December 21st, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. That will be at 7:00 PM. And that is it because it is the holiday season. Anyone who is interested in finding out what's going on in your neighborhood and how to implement some safety features for you and your family's protection, I urge you to attend a community or crime watch meeting in your area or anywhere in the city. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance third and final passage.
Ordinance number 17-34 sponsored by Councilman Warple. And ordinance authorizing the city comptroller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2017 accounts budgets.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1734.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of 1734. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen thirty-four passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 1735 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. And ordinance creating a rainy day fund, number 245, for the city of Hammond.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Final passage, 1735.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Warple for final passage of 1735. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just needed some clarity on that particular ordinance in terms of rainy day.
Heather, our comptroller, would you mind approaching the podium, please?
This ordinance is authorizing us to open a rainy day fund for the city. It's regulated by state statutes, so it dictates what funding sources can be used and what expenses are allowable under this fund. We have outlined those specific uses within our ordinance that are specific to the city itself. In the 2018 budget, we anticipate using this fund to collect the savings from the guaranteed energy savings project that is currently going on throughout the city. And some of those dollars will be used to pay the debt service payments in order to implement that project. Going forward, we hope to accumulate savings there that can be used for other purposes, potentially reducing budget line items or other capital projects.
Any other questions? Thank you, Heather. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on 1735, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen thirty-five passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 17-36 sponsored by Councilman Rakels. And ordinance creating a new fund, fund number 255, for the city of Hammond for purposes of receipt and disbursement of FEMA assistance to firefighters grant fund.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
I move for final passage and adoption, 1736.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of 1736. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen thirty-six passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 17-37 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. And ordinance classifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond including regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 121 142nd Street.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for a third reading and final passage of 17-37.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 1737. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Is this taking an I-2 and S-1 zoning and creating one zoning parcel of S-1 west of the Bay Ruth Field at Hermits Park?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen thirty-seven passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vines, that concludes the reading of ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances, there are none, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 17R-36 sponsored by Councilman Markovich, I'm sorry, Councilman, yes, Councilman Markovich, Councilman Spitali, and Councilwoman Vines. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana approving the issuance of bonds by the Hammond Sanitary District to refund certain outstanding bonds and pay the cost of issuing the bonds.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
This is for the Sanitary District in refinancing of the bonds to looking for lower rates and then not to exceed 6% interest rate.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on 17R-36.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen R-36 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, Resolution 17R-37 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution reappointing Janet Vines to the board of the Hammond Urban Academy, also known as Hast, H-A-S-T.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 17R-37.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of 17R-37. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Councilwoman Vines has been on the board for six years. If reappointed, she'll hold the position until December 31st, 2020.
No, I do.
And acknowledge that this is not a non-
I absolutely babysit people.
Is that your appointment or the mayor's?
Alrighty, thank you, Councilman Spitali. Do we have a problem? Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen R-37 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item C, Resolution, item, item, six? Item D, I'm sorry, Resolution 17R-38 sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution to reappoint Gregory Myrex to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Move for final passage of Resolution 17R-38. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 17R-38. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen R-38 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item D, E rather, Resolution 17R-39 sponsored by Councilman Higgs.
Did we get an extra? No, I'm sorry, 17R-40. We got 39, yes.
Thirty-nine.
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 I apologize, Madam President. A resolution confirming the appointment of Christine Hill as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
What's going on out there?
I don't know.
Well, hit the gavel.
Madam President.
One moment, Councilman Higgs. Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of Resolution 17R-39. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Warple, was that? Yes, okay. For final passage of 17R-39. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen R-39 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item E, Resolution 17R-40 sponsored by Councilman Torres. A resolution confirming the appointment of Ivan Rocha as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
I move for final passage of 17R-40. Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of 17R-40. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen R-40 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vines, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to intent to consider, by virtue of passing 1737 earlier this evening, the intent to consider of those passes. Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to Public Works to have the tree removed on Bauer and Road in the 900 block and also the tree removed in the 900 block of Fields. They've been in the open lots and they're dead and they're just eyesore in the community and I would hope that they would get them cut down and removed as quickly as possible. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Councilman Markovich to have a letter sent to Public Works to have trees cut down, the 900 block of Bauer and Grove. Is that right? Groper.
Bauer and Road, there's a lot in the 800 block of Bauer and Road, there's an open lot.
Grove.
Tree is dead, it's been sitting there for a number of years, just like I see it, I would think they would see it as well, but however, it needs to be cut down. And also, there's a tree in the 900 block of Field Street that's dead, that's been sitting there for a number of years where for some reason or another, it has not been cut down and removed from the community. I'm sure if it was next to the mayor's house, it would probably be removed, so I don't know why they keep riding by and not removing it, but anyway.
Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
You keep saying a lot, a lot. If it's private property, we can't go on there and cut these trees then.
Not true, Councilman Markovich. If they cite the property owner, they can remove the tree and put a lien on the property. They just need to do their job and get the tree removed.
Okay, well, I'm sure they appreciate the notification. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
My understanding that the park department is removing trees now, Mark Heintz, not Public Works.
Would you like to have the letter sent to the park department as well, Councilman?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have a copy of that letter sent to the law department, see if that's legal, what they're planning on doing.
I'm sure they will research it. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'm pretty sure no one's gonna go on private property and just cut a tree down without knowing what the law says, Councilman Markovich, but however, if that's where you want it to go, that's fine with me.
Alrighty, I think we've got all our bases covered on that request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
This Pearlane Jenkins' house has been vacant for about fifteen years at 936 Conkey Street. The windows are busted out and I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement in regards to having that house be in demo. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to code enforcement about the potential demolition of a vacant property at 936 Conkey Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Well, I would like to announce that Wednesday evening, beginning at 6:00 PM at Hammond High, the Eastside Community Council is once again partnering with the Hammond Police Department for their annual toy giveaway. Any child up to the age of eighteen, not including eighteen, but up to eighteen, will receive a toy. They are also raffling off hams and other items, so I encourage everyone who might know someone who, whose family might not receive a gift this Christmas to go to Hammond High and participate in this wonderful event. Again, that's Wednesday, December 20th, beginning at 6:00 PM at Hammond High. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I guess I'll say it, I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas out there. If it's anything like my house, I got kids crawling all over my house like ants right now, so. I do like the idea of the toy drive you're talking about.
About what?
The toy drive you're talking about, it's.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy and prosperous new year to all. I also wanted to wish a happy birthday to our very own Jake Jacobs. Happy birthday, Jake. Also, our city clerk, Bob Golick, happy birthday. Judge Julie Cantrell also has her birthday today. And today happens to be my wedding anniversary, so happy anniversary, sweetheart, I know you're watching. And that is not a sexist comment, that is to my husband. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now. Public expression. Hey, George?
Thank you.
George Stoya, your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Stale, Hammond, Indiana. Reason I'm up there, there was a report a couple days ago by ABC, it was on the net, I think Chuck Gowdy wrote it, concerning a, I guess it was a federal bust of a liquor store, Columbia Liquors, I believe was the name, and they were busted for bootlegging. And I think it was filed in federal court and he charges that they're selling Indiana, his Indiana liquor, he supplies through the Indiana supplier, and then he's selling out of the back door, he's selling wholesale, I suspect, to the liquor store owners in Illinois. rather, excuse me, there, I, there's an assumption or implication that they're intentionally depriving Illinois of excise taxes. And what concerns me is, I think there should be a letter going out from this council to the effect that, where does it stop? If you go after the liquor store guys, then you go after gasoline, gasoline station guys, you go after the cigarette guys. Where does it stop? I mean, statutory interpretation is awfully wrong. And maybe somebody from this council, its attorney, maybe, uh, uh, the mayor's office ought to look into it, 'cause, you know, Illinois is a big source of our revenues and I don't know how they would police it. I'm as up in the air as you guys would be about it, but it ain't good. Anyway, thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you, George. Public expression is now closed.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to reopen, uh, the floor.
Under new and unfinished business?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Higgs, is there a second? Uh, he would like to reopen, uh, under new and unfinished business.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman, uh, Torres to reopen the meeting under new and unfinished business. Any discussion? We do need a roll call vote, please, Clerk Golick.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spatelli?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Ann Vines?
Yes.